Welcome to the September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Let us all stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will read the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the city council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor plan for a future agenda. Would the clerk please call the first item for today's agenda?
Yes, our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Is anyone here that would like to speak on these three agenda items? Seeing no one coming forth?
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Item one A was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Eskridge and a second by Raybold. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge. Motion carried, seven to zero. Items one B and C and two A and B were introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, a second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Item four A, application of rail yard entertainment for an S D L to cover an outdoor area, measuring approximately three hundred fifty-six feet by two hundred thirty feet at the rail yard at three fifty Canopy Street and six oh one R Street on September twenty-ninth from noon to eight P M. This was carried over from last week.
Thank you. So is anyone that would like to testify on this agenda item?
Good afternoon. Jeff Blimeister, Lincoln Police Department. I've had the opportunity to testify on this particular topic several different times and just kind of wanted to reiterate some of the different components that we are looking at as this S D L comes in front of all of you. And I do want to emphasize that there has been great communication between multiple agencies within the city and within the, um, those at the rail yard, also a few of which are present here today. The overwhelming concern that has been presented to you on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and remains today is, do we have an ability to provide the necessary staffing with the expansion of an S D L onto Canopy Street to ensure that the rail yard is safe and secure for all of those that want to attend? In previous meetings, we have testified on a variety of other different topics as far as the number of citations that were issued during the Colorado game. And there was testimony on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and also those from the rail yard talking about an increased emphasis on the part of their security staff to bring forward any violations that they find within the parameters of the rail yard S D L. As we look at this, we've, we've conversed internally and if the city council decides today to expand the liquor license onto Canopy Street, the decisions that we'll have in front of us in the Lincoln Police Department are this. And that is, do we have the resources to dedicate an additional four officers on top of the two officers that are already present for the closure of Canopy Street to, um, to the rail yard? We believe an additional four officers is the minimum that is necessitated in order to accomplish a safe and secure environment. And if that is what is presented by the council, that is what we will do. We may have to divert assignments from other areas of the city. I've said that publicly and I want to make sure that I acknowledge that to you. Because when we post, when we open the enrollment for our officers to sign up for these particular jobs, we have to prioritize those. And the first priority is going to be pre-game traffic direction and control. Without that, we do not believe there would be safe passage for those coming to Lincoln for a game day. Secondly, there is going to be the largest concentration of people at Memorial Stadium. And we have worked collaboratively with the University of Nebraska Police Department for a long, long time to ensure the safety of Memorial Stadium and those attending the game. And the Lincoln Police Department is not the only public safety agency. I mentioned the University of Nebraska Police Department, the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, and the Nebraska State Patrol. All provide those functions. And during my conversations with Chief Yardley at the University of Nebraska Police Department, they will always take more resources than we can provide. So the real testament is going to be, are we going to open up the rail yard staffing in advance of the north bottoms detail? And any other off-duty employment that is occurring on the game day? And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Are there questions to Chief Blimeister? Councilman Kiel?
Thank you, Chief, uh, for that. And, um, as far as statistics you're finding with this increased reporting, which I guess I'm confused it wasn't reported before, but you're having, how is that varying?
Gotcha. This was anecdotal testimon- testimony because I have not taken the time to go back and look at each different game day at the rail yard to see how many different minor in possession tickets, minor attempt to purchase, urinating in public, consuming in public. The litany goes on and on, um, to see if there is a increase. But I do know, and I believe based upon my conversations with Brian and with Eric, that they are making, they're encouraging their security staff through Fry-Frazee to bring those, uh, reports of, uh, criminal activity forward. We talk about how do we gauge the success? Is the S D L for the Purdue game a success? That's difficult for us to say. You know, is one disturbance one too many? Is one large-scale fight one too many? I guess we'll just have to evaluate that after it occurs, if there is an approval of the S D L. I just want to reemphasize, our, our singu- our biggest concern remains, can we provide enough staffing based upon the resources that the Lincoln Police Department has to accommodate this on a game day?
I may, so if you need another four officers, would they be on duty or would they be hired by the rail yard to patrol Canopy Street?
Hired by the rail yard as part of the S D L expansion onto Canopy Street.
Are there officers who would be willing to do that? I mean, what's your experience been with those who sign up for these overtime, uh, situations?
Great question. My experience is limited to the last two and a half years. And in that particular timeframe, because we've quizzed ourselves internally, that we have been able to fill the off-duty employment spots for all of the different details that are going on consistently. Now, I'd have to look back at each individual game day over the past many years to know if there's one here or there. But overall, they have been filled. We have not posted this because there hasn't been a decision yet. And, um, based upon the decision here today, that will dictate when we open up those processes. I just, go ahead. Sorry.
Zach, in the audience. Please, Councilman, continue.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Uh, what are you hearing from the, the two officers that have been doing this? Is it the same officers or different ones? But I mean, what are they saying on their experience with just no one, no alcohol in the court, the Canopy Street?
We have had some anecdotal information brought forward. And they are talking about, because what they're doing is they're comparing other details that are going on. Traffic direction and control is something they could sign up for. And is it more difficult than the job in the rail yard? And they are claiming to us that the rail yard is a very difficult job at times during, um, right prior to and following a game from occurring. And when we ask, well, what does that mean? It really has to do with the volume of people and the volume that is coming forward from the security staff, um, where they're really trying to, once again, triage. Does this individual need a ticket for minor in possession of alcohol? Do they need a transport to the bridge? Is the bridge currently at capacity? And we don't have an ability to take them to the bridge and we have to work even harder to find someone who is sober and willing to accept responsibility for them. Those are the different stories that are being shared with us, Councilman Camp.
What other police officers, whether they're on duty or off duty, are dedicated other than street, uh, direction of traffic?
Where else are they? Memorial Stadium. And we overlap those assignments through our partnership with the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. Typically, what is happening is there is a large contingent of officers that are assigned, uh, to pre-game traffic direction and control. And it's a combination of on-duty and off-duty resources. When game, when that traffic subsides, right prior to the game, they move to Memorial Stadium where we have a concentration of approximately a hundred thousand people. Right prior to the end of the game, they move back to their post-game traffic assignment details. About four hours in advance of any particular game, we have a, a large contingent of officers that are in the north bottoms. And they are focusing on large-scale parties, on those that are consuming in public, and the free direction, traffic direction and control based upon parking, issues that occur in the areas immediately to the north of Memorial Stadium. Those are the, some of the off-duty resources. We also have consistently have off-duty officers that are working at the area hospitals. Both C H I and Brian Health Systems. And so all of those particular things are ongoing. Some of them are even outside of any typical game day, just a typical Saturday afternoon or Saturday evening.
Do you have to devote any resources, you mentioned the north bottoms. Are there any other resources in the downtown Lincoln vicinity or Haymarket that you have to devote officers to, except for traffic, other than traffic?
The, the normal calls for service that you would anticipate that we would have in our center team area, the downtown portion of Lincoln, those are still there. And they're amplified because we have such a great number of people in a concentrated location. And so those are on-duty officers that are mainly accommodating the routine or not-so-routine calls for service. And it's impossible to predict. That could range from something as extreme as a homicide to something as a, a small-scale disturbance. All of those particular things are something that our officers, the on-duty officers are dealing with.
Would you say then, and kind of summarizing here, that right now, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that your stress, your stretch fairly thin now without having an added situation here on Canopy Street?
Through our workload analysis, and again, we cannot staff for seven days a week, or seven days a year, excuse me, the home games. But the combination of on-duty and off-duty resources that are allotted to a particular game day are tasking to those that are asked to work those assignments. And it takes up a very large percentage of our commissioned workforce.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilman. Others, like the questions for this testifier? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
Hi, guys. Um, I would just like to say that I was on, Brian Krajewski, general manager of the rail yard.
Thank you.
Um, so we were under the impression as the rail yard that in order to execute this successfully with L P D's support, we would need an additional two officers to bring our total number to four. So if I was mistaken in that.
Brian, we, we met on those particular discussions and I think that they were rooted in the I L C discussions. Um, it is my understanding, um, which I was not present for, but I did query Captain Stilly on that specifically, and it was his understanding, uh, that this was four more for the S D L itself. So four on top of the two that were already allotted for the closure of Canopy Street. That was my understanding of those conversations.
Okay. So just wanted to clear that up.
Okay.
Do you have additional testimony?
I mean, obviously, we're, we're looking forward to the opportunity to do this and execute it properly, like I've said in the past weeks. Um, well, obviously, we respect the chief's, um, assessment of the situation. And we're just, again, looking to make it, safety is our number one priority, as I've said. And we're looking to make an area that, you know, is obviously safe for everybody. And we feel that extending the area that people can be within the rail yard and, you know, have a good time is, it's about safety. It's about keeping the density of the rail yard in a way that we can operate. It creates more room for our security staff to move about freely and get to situations should they need to be get somewhere. It allows for cleaning to move around the, the rail yard a little bit better. Um, so again, we're just looking for the opportunity to execute one of these and execute it properly.
Okay. Are there questions for this testifier? Councilman Kiel?
Could you describe how things have changed this last couple of games with the, uh, public market now going more active in the alcohol sales?
Well, I mean, the public market has always been kind of like a changing situation since I've been in Lincoln and in this position.
How long have you been in the position?
Uh, this is my second football season. So we, we took over as a company on September first last year. Um, just in what I've seen is last year, the same number of windows operated as this year. Um, actually, some of the games this year have had fewer windows operating as far as alcohol sales. Past couple of games, we've had Runzo, we have Burger-Five in the, in those public market spaces selling food. Um, their sales have done a little bit lower numbers, but again, those are newer, new, um, I don't want to call them tenants, but those are new concepts that have been in there, kind of on like a game-by-game basis to kind of get some traffic and create some more food sales in there. So they haven't all been devoted to strictly alcohol sales.
Now, I had, um, some people observe one of the games here recently, and I understand you, there were like four different dispensing alcohol stations inside the public market plus the window service.
That was the case last year as well. So those four bays that, the two bays that were technically empty would operate last season as well as the forward-facing windows. Actually, this year, the Maisy window has not been operating every game as a point of sale. Neither has the Far window to the inside closest to the gate twenty-five annex space.
How does that work? Are you monitoring the, the dollar amount of sales? Because as I recall, there are certain percentages in all the, in the rail yard itself and the public market you're supposed to stay within as far as food, beverage ratios?
My company is not a part of the public market. We are simply just operators, so I don't have access to the sales that whoever's operating those windows would put out.
How would you describe your enforcement of the rail yard?
I think we've, I mean, since I've been here, I've seen nothing but improvement. I mean, tenant relationships, we've gotten better. We've gotten a lot of people on the same page and we've kind of taken steps forward as a group to get some of these things done. Obviously, having all the tenants agree to submit an S D L application is a big first step. Um, we've had more events, um, since I've taken over that they've had in past years. Our rental revenue was up as far as events goes in that sense. We've had Celebrate Lincoln this past year, which was a success. Um, you look at the Josh Abbott Band Show that we had a couple, August twenty-fourth, the Friday before the first football game. That was a success as far as safety and a number of people in the rail yard on, an event that typically wouldn't be there. And that's what we're trying to do as a company in that space is bring more events down there and create a place that people want to be and really brand it as the entertainment district and make it fit that bill.
Yeah, well, the entertainment district doesn't buy alcohol sales have to, it doesn't really include the Canopy Street. So you're asking for the S D L on that, which back when this was all conceived, the S D Ls were to be virtually none, if any. But, um, you said you think it's, it's improved on, I guess, enforcement, whatever. Reports I'm hearing, I mean, are you ejecting people? I mean, for example, uh, the observer I had saw two women vomiting and nothing was done. I mean, that's obviously indicative of excess alcohol.
Well, I can tell you from my personal experience and just being down there for pretty much every event, that when we do see somebody vomiting, we address it and address it immediately. Um, you know, that's going to happen no matter, like, from my previous experience in other venues similar to P V A, which is where I start, like, venues like that where I started my career. You have that, anywhere you have people out, you're just going to have people that take it too far. Um, so it's obviously limiting that. And I think my security does a great job of identifying those people and taking action, taking the steps to prevent them from being overserved as well as ejecting the people that do get caught, whether it be minor in possession, minor attempting to purchase. And we do push those people to L P D to receive a citation. So it deters that type of behavior because we don't want people to just assume that they can come to the rail yard, get an X on their hand, and then come back the next weekend, do it all over again. We want to set a precedent that if you come to the rail yard, you're going to have to be held accountable for your actions.
Well, it concerns me to hear you say that that's just happens, that people are going to vomit where they're drinking too much. Because the idea is you're supposed to be monitoring that, especially the entertainment district with the overlaying establishments. I mean, that was, again, part of the way this was constructed, that there would be amongst the dispensers of alcohol, the businesses, a careful watching so we don't get to that point. And obviously, it's exceeded if people are getting sick like this and, uh...
I mean, this past weekend, we had one girl who got sick simply, she wasn't even drinking, but she was out in the sun for too long. She was just strictly dehydrated. So while alcohol may be the primary culprit in some cases, there are other factors when it comes into that space. But I think the vendors, as well as my staff, does a good job of, like I said, trying to identify those people and prevent that from happening.
How many people do you eject from the courtyard for?
It depends on the day and depends on the time of the game.
What about football games?
I mean, this past weekend, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I'd have to look at the security report. But, um, you know, we had ten the first game, or the Colorado game.
And how many people do you think were in the rail yard on those?
Uh, we got to capacity, we got to around fifteen hundred pretty quick on the Colorado game and it stayed there. We actually had to shut off letting people in for a little while till the swell went down. And then we were able to, as the crowd subdued after the game, we were able to reopen up.
Again, you got what, six entrances?
We do. So on an S D L, we have fewer entrances actually because of the street. So it creates an opportunity for more of my security to be rovers to prevent and identify more situations where if somebody may be in distress or, you know, been overserved or something like that.
So you would shut down the other six and just have Canopy Street?
So what, we would essentially make those exit only and you'd have to enter through either side of Canopy Street. The annex space at the back between Gate twenty-five and Catalyst Bank would be an entrance and an exit as well as the two sides of, um, Canopy Street, plus the, the people that wish to enter through Long Wells and Gate twenty-five. And then everything else would be exit only.
Now, where most establishments have a central entrance, you know, they're able to determine when they've reached capacity. With your six entrances, uh, I know I've asked you this before, I guess, how do you really coordinate it and ensure you're not exceeding?
We're all in constant communication pretty much throughout the day. We all have walkie-talkies between myself and heads of security as well as the tenants. And, you know, it's just the constant communication to make sure that the ebbs and flow of the crowd are being monitored.
Other questions from the coun- Other questions from the council? I'd like to ask a question follow-up on the capacity thing. One of the issues that you say expanding this would help you do is provide more space for the people that are already there.
Correct.
And, and as Councilman Camp pointed out, I don't, is there a way to count capacity? Are you keeping track of the number of people that enter? And how much are you planning to increase or are you planning to restrict the number if the S D L is granted?
So we wouldn't, we're not anticipating to, to grow, like, to double our capacity if we close down the street. We're expecting, you know, maybe half of that to show up and fill the extra space. So, you know, really, it's just based on flow. If the rail yard gets to a point where my cleaning staff can't move, I can't move, they're, like, we know we're beyond that. So we need to, and we do a really good job of making sure we don't get to that point. And it's all based on feel. It's really hard. We do have clickers that we use, but it's constantly people in, going out to smoke in the street, and then they're coming back in. And then you have the people that are using the restrooms that are located on the street. So it's really just people in and out constantly. Um, when we do get to that, or close to capacity or at capacity and we shut down the entrances, we essentially make one entrance, and that's for people using the restrooms closest to the cube by the Bourbon Street and underneath that entrance. And then that becomes entrance only for people using the facilities and then everything else is exit only.
Would you elaborate on Bourbon Street for the coun-
Underneath the cube, it's, uh-
The new establishment.
Connects to the patio space.
Other questions from the council? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for this agenda item? Any more?
We have some staff again. I'd like legal for Police Department.
Thank you.
Tanya Peters, Assistant City Attorney.
Hi, Ms. Peters. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Councilman?
Thank you, Ms. Peters. I'm kind of curious, it's your thought where Eric was just talking about they kind of feel whether they're at capacity or not and the six areas and the communication and not only six entrances, but you've also, as he mentioned, have the establishments and how, how does that sit with you when you have a capacity?
Well, I would assume at times they're over their, um, occupancy for that space. And their occupancy is based upon, um, the out, talking the outdoor space, um, based upon the seating and how much stand-up room, how many tables they have. And, um, Investigator Schweitzer has done an occupancy for them. The problem, and this is more probably a liability issue, should something happen in that space for them? Um, if there's a fire- If there's a fire, if, you know, a bad situation happens and people need to exit. We see those stories across the country. So it's really incumbent upon them to make sure that they are following those occupancy numbers. The problem the rail yard has is all the doors that come into that area. Because people can exit or come in, let's say, for example, into Long Wells from the street, walk through the business, exit out onto the rail yard area, the outdoor area. So they really need to figure out a way to control that so they can control their numbers.
If I could do a follow up on that.
Yes, please.
You mentioned liability for them, but like you say, we've heard of these unfortunate nightclub incidents or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And where we're part and parcel of approving these licenses, these SDLs, I guess that concerns me. If we're not comfortable that they are actually following what the occupancy levels are that Investigator Schweitzer or others would put on them.
I think their argument is true that that, in that rail yard space will loosen up a little bit. There will probably be more standing room, but I also think there will be more people that will come to this area. So it's not going to be limited to the 2,500. It's going to be a greater number. What number, we don't know. It could be up to 5,000, maybe more, maybe less. I say up to, and then I say maybe more. We just don't know.
Didn't catch that.
Yeah. The amount of people that are going to come to this area. So, but in all likelihood, it's going to loosen up some of that space. Now, other businesses get busy, and we don't allow them to use our public sidewalks or our streets to accommodate their guests or their customers like that. So to say that's okay and to do that for that reason, that would not be appropriate because we have many other places that would love to use city space to be able to serve more food or more beer, more products.
Other questions from the council? I want to ask a question. I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe I'll need Chief to answer. If one of the officers on duties thought the rail yard was being too crowded, can he direct someone to say, okay, you need to shut this off now, no more people? Do we have the authority to do that?
Yes, I think so. They are trained some way in occupancy, but they don't necessarily know either. That's their one person trying to account. But going with the obvious, right? If it's too crowded for people to walk, definitely. But there are six entrances and one officer trying to control that, that's hard to deal.
Thank you, Chief, for coming by.
I would agree with Tanya's assessment of that. The more likely scenario is this, if there was a medical emergency within the parameters of the rail yard itself, and there was difficulty for the officers themselves or Lincoln Fire and Rescue to be able to get into where the individual in medical crisis would need based upon it being so compacted, that would probably signal, that would be the more likely situation where that would occur. Good question.
I understand. Other questions for Ms. Peters or Chief?
Yeah.
Councilman Chris Eskridge.
Thank you. Ms. Peters, there have been other SDLs for the rail yard that has been closed off for Garth Brooks and some other concerts and things, but this is the first football.
This would be the first one that would be approved. Yeah, if it's approved for football.
For football. But there have been these others for concerts.
Correct.
And similar number of people, I'm guessing?
Similar number of people, yeah.
And any?
Potentially a similar number of people.
Any issues that have occurred?
I think...
Unusual, different from not doing an SDL?
No, I don't think so. I think that the problems that happen at most street dances and other events, they're similar. What we have that is different here is that we have a very large amount of people coming to Lincoln. We have our officers spread through this area, trying to handle the volume of traffic, the pedestrian traffic. We have a lot more drinking that is going on at earlier in the day, right? Where we don't have that with these other events. Like the Garth, they might have drank before, but it was maybe an hour or two before. What we see game day is, you know, as soon as the sun is up, people are setting up tailgate spots and coming downtown and, you know, it maybe it's, and so we have some people that are drinking all day. And we don't have those in those other situations. That's why we encourage them to do events on Friday night, bring other concerts to town and do it on Canopy. Do other events that bring people down in this area any other day certainly can handle that. It's just game day is hard.
Chief, would you like to follow up? Would you like to? Other questions from the council? Would anyone else in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one else?
All right. This was originally introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge and a second by Raybold. I, thank you, Councilwoman Lamb. I was going to say, I dare not ask for additional discussion, but Councilwoman Lamb.
Thank you, yes. I still definitely have my concerns, and actually, my concerns aren't just, and I wanted everyone to be, to know this, aren't just with the rail yard itself or with what's happening with the alcohol out on Canopy Street. It is with the resources. Our number one role is safety of our residents and our visitors, and not only those that are visiting us in the rail yard and at Memorial Stadium, but the fact that we have to pull resources away from other areas of the city, including the North Bottoms or wherever else there might be the possibility of people encountering unsafe conditions. There's, you know, we all know there's additional drinking going on all over town, not just at the rail yard. And so I am concerned that the resources are too thin, and so I am still going to oppose this. And, you know, I just, I realize that these folks are wanting to just give it a try. I just, I just don't think that we have the staff to do it right now. And I think that because our number one role is to provide for safety of our residents, that we need to pay really close attention to that.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah. I first just want to thank the folks in the rail yard. There certainly was a lot of progress made in terms of the collaboration. You know, it's difficult, and the safety measures that you are undertaking are very much appreciated. That said, I feel like this is one of those difficult decisions that the council faces when we have the certainty of alleviating pressure in a particular situation, in this case, alleviating pressure on the rail yard, versus the uncertainty of what kind of pressures will be placed on LPD on a game day, not just downtown, but all throughout the city. And those pressures, particularly at the far reaches, whether it's in northeast Lincoln or southeast Lincoln, it would be more difficult to get to the outer edges of the city if so many officers are concentrated in this, in this area of the rail yard. So I too will oppose this, but I understand that all of us are weighing that complicated certainty and uncertainty.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Camp, Councilwoman Raybold, and then Councilman Christiansen.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the testimony today, and I've watched this. Mr. Eskridge and I were here as a lot of the rail yard developed, and during that time, first of all, the whole concept of the overlapping liquor licenses was new, and that was a big concession made, or I shouldn't say concession, but it was a new chapter and things. But at the same time, we talked extensively about other activities like this. And as Ms. Peters said, you know, SDLs on a non-football game are one thing, and we've had limits on those, but still have had successful opportunities. When it comes to the football games, though, from day one, that was just kind of a prohibition. And it concerns me on a couple of matters. One to say, well, let's try it once. Well, that, that kind of says, well, we're going to open the door, and if that works, we'll just keep going on. And I think that the line needs to be drawn that no, there will not be an SDL on Canopy Street in this situation for a football game. Period. So from that standpoint, I think that that's a policy that we need to maintain. It's just, and to hear about the way of monitoring, of calculating how many people are in there, it concerns me. It's just not a, it's difficult, given the nature. I think if at least we have the rail yard, that's one thing, but now to expand it out, even if you say we're going to have two main entrances, it's just opening the doors for so much more. And I was concerned with some of the reports I've had from people I've had go look at this and what's happened. And then I'd like to echo too what my colleagues have said here about our, the safety of our citizens. Public safety is so critical, and so what Chief Blimeister is already doing with the officers he has, and thankfully, there are off-duty officers who are willing to sign up for some of these details, but that's putting a lot of pressure on them. And I don't want to get too much detail, but I think it is stretching us so that if we have some other situations elsewhere in the city, we're putting those people at risk. And none of us today can say what that is. Or even if you had to get a, some type of a big emergency in the rail yard, getting equipment in there when you have so many thousands of people concentrated, it's just setting up a situation that is one that I don't think is responsible to do and that we owe it to the public and to the people who come to Lincoln this and go to the football games and so forth, to have an enjoyable activity and one that's going to be safe and that we know we're able to reasonably provide that safety. So I too will not support this.
Councilwoman Raybold?
You know, as a business owner, I will continue to support this. You know, we have created an amazing area in our community, a real showcase of our community, and it has become a popular place, whether we acknowledge it or not. You know, the reality is people love to go down there, especially on a game day. You know, the businesses that operate there, the burden is on them to demonstrate that they take public safety just as seriously as all of us here up on the diestu, as well as our wonderful law enforcement. You know, they deserve that opportunity to demonstrate that they are willing and able and capable of protecting our public. In my mind, you know, when we're trying to concentrate all the people that want to go there and will continue to go down to the rail yard in that smaller space, to me, that is really a public hazard. If we open them up to freely go about into the streets that are closed off, I think that is a better situation, rather than trying to cram all those people in a smaller space, prohibiting easier access and movement. It makes more sense to me, just to open it up. I have heard so much testimony from the businesses, they're ready, willing, and able to rise up to this occasion. And I think it's high time that we acknowledge and trust them to do exactly what they'd like to do. And sometimes, you know, I get frustrated. I think sometimes government does get in the way of allowing businesses to take on that responsibility and demonstrate that they are capable of protecting our public. So I will continue to support this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Christiansen?
I agree with Councilwoman Raybold and her assessment, but I would like to add one more thought to this. Special events are one of three drivers, main drivers of the requirements for police staffing in our community. And this discussion today highlights the fact that we are severely understaffed in our police department. That's the real discussion we need to have ongoing from this point on, our understaffing. And that's, responsibility lays with all of us up here at the dius and with the mayor. And we need to not forget what we've been discussing and how much discussion's been going on on this event. And continue to pressure to give our police department the manpower resources that are needed to allow our community to continue to be vibrant and growing and have more special events and continue to be safe.
Thank you.
And woman power.
What was it saying?
Sorry, couldn't help myself.
I missed it. I would like to echo the comments of all of my council, fellow council members. I'm concerned about the staffing issue, and that's probably my biggest concern. Second biggest concern is the number of people, the capacity in the rail yard. I think we have an entertainment district. I've heard from people in the community, both pro and against, and this is one of those things where I wish it were nice and neat and cut and dry, but I feel we should try. I think we should try this and collect some data, collect some information, see what happens, see where our shortcomings are and see where our assets lie. I think we should also encourage our Husker fans and our Lincolnites. This is a chance for them to show us that they can comply and that they are good citizens, good fans, and good community members. But this, addressing something Councilman Camp said, just because we say yes today, or we may say yes today, I plan to say yes today, that doesn't mean I will say yes in the future. I think we would give, this is a good opportunity for us to see where our resources lie and see where the limits are. Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your leadership in this and so many other areas in our city. Public safety, we agree, is number one, and that's, that's something that we don't want to see jeopardized at all. We also have invested as a community in this entertainment district and was established to be a place, a place of celebration in the community. When you have big events, this is a place where we want people to come. And one of our, our local media partners had a story this weekend on the TV news, and they interviewed the chief. And they also had a picture or films showing the perspective from, from the buildings at the rail yard out toward the rail yard itself and then toward Canopy Street beyond it. And, and it was on a game day, don't know which game day, but, you know, people were jammed in there. It's shoulder to shoulder tight. And you look out beyond the fence, there were maybe five people. And, and so there's that space, that place where, where people can have a more enjoyable, presumably a safer environment to be and enjoy a game. I do not support having special events for evening games. I think that's problematic. You have people drinking there all day long, going into the stadium. That's, that's not, I don't think that's a safe environment that I would support. We did learn today that game time for the Purdue game has been set at 2:30. We have the hours that were proposed from noon until 8:00 PM. I think it's time to give it a try, but it needs to be a success. We don't, if it's not, this will be the one and only, presumably. So I think it's an important public-private partnership with the rail yard, with your staff, and with LPD, and with people in our community to make sure that this works.
Thank you. I think everyone's had a chance to speak. We're ready to vote. Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Beard?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, approving the 2018-19 city tax rate of .31648 per $100 of assessed valuation.
Does anyone in the audience would like to testify on this agenda item?
Members of the council, this is basically a follow-up to the budget adoption. This is the setting of the tax rate. So on August 20th, the city council considered action to adopt the budget for the 2018, 2019, and 1920 fiscal years. The final budget vote on the 20th established a property tax revenue of $68,582,346. The proposed tax rate remained flat at .31648. Nebraska statute requires the governing body to file and certify with the county clerk before October 13th.
Questions from the council? Councilwoman Raybold, thank you.
So Brandon, this represents no tax rate increase from the previous two years?
There is no tax rate increase.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Christiansen, then Councilwoman Lamb.
My understanding through past experience, this is a ministerial duty, and that we will vote yes.
I believe that is correct.
Thank you. More of a statement than a question? Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, even though there's not a tax rate increase, this is a larger property tax ask than last year.
We will receive more money in property tax revenues. That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp? Councilman Camp?
Thank you. And following up on that, about how many millions more will we be collecting this first year? first year because of the increase in values?
Because of the increased values?
I mean, we have the rate the same, but that's applied to the valuations of property.
I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me right now that I could...
Wouldn't that be part of the whole project, budget process? Because you have to predict what you need in order to...
Yeah, but part of, part of it comes through new construction versus revaluation of current properties.
Well, I don't care about the categories. I just want to know, how many millions more will we be getting?
Um...
We'll receive.
Let's see here. I'll have to look that up real quick, if you allow me the time.
Is that a 30-second lookup, or?
Uh, if I can pull up the budget book real quick, I can...
Yeah.
Okay, hold on.
I feel the need for elevator music. Don't do that. Okay.
I think, I think that should be one of the additions we have in our budget is is background music at certain times. No joke. I mistake, they're great at orchestrating that.
I would probably choose De Niro by J-Lo, actually.
Would it be appropriate to have him look that up, and we go see if there are other testifiers and come back to that?
That would be fine, if you'd like to do that.
While the finance director looks at it, do you have it?
Yes.
Okay, never mind.
Seventeen eighteen total tax levied was $64,931,996.
And how much more is...
Um, so that would be, what, about approximately 3.5 million, roughly?
That's what I was looking for. So really, despite the same rate, there'll be collections anticipated of another three and a half million dollars.
That's correct. We're receiving more property tax revenues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for this testifier? Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, may we move to the next item?
All right, next is approving an update of the city's federal transit administration program for drug and alcohol testing for workers in safety-sensitive functions.
Good afternoon, council. Don Taught with the City Attorney's Office, and I would be here to offer just a brief statement on what this item is. It's an update, as it says in the agenda of the Federal Transit Administration, Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. We've had this policy in place since, so, about 95, and it was the result of two pieces of federal legislation, the Drug Free Workplace Act of 1988, and then the Omnibus Transportation Employee Testing Act of 1991. And what we had to do in response to those two pieces of legislation was adopt drug and alcohol testing policies for all of our employees that had CDLs. And this was largely in response to the over-the-road trucking industry and long hours and, you know, started getting into things that would keep them awake. And those those drugs got to be a little bit of a problem, and so this legislation resulted. But what you have before you is just an update. The last time it was a substantive update was in 2012, and there was a minor tweaks in 2015. And this usually, we have a a, a visit from the Kansas City Region Representative will come in and talk to Doug Thorpe in HR, who is the administrator of the program, and implement the changes that have been made through the regulations, 49 CFR, parts 40 and 655. They periodically update those to cover different things, changing processes and what have you, and they come in just for a periodic review. That was done this spring, and the changes that you see in here are largely administrative changes and just clean up after, and suggestions from the representative from the Kansas City Region. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try and address those.
Councilman Camp?
Yeah, I'm just looking at you, you mentioned CDFs. What's the difference between a CDF and a CDL?
CDL, I'm sorry. I said CDL. I missed, no, it's a, yeah, CDL.
I can help.
Thank you. Help with your hearing problem, I think.
I may have mumbled a little bit, but I meant CDL, a commercial driver's license.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions from the council? Thank you very much. Would anyone else in the chamber like to testify on agenda item number 5B? Seeing no one, may we move to 5C?
All right, this is approving the labor contract between the city and amalgamated transit union to be effective August 23rd, 2018, through August 31st, 2020.
Welcome back.
Well, I'm here again, Don Taught from the City Attorney's Office. What you have before you is just a resolution to approve a two-year bargaining agreement that we've negotiated with our our transit union. And we had a briefing with council last Monday to kind of give you the highlights of of the contract. It is a two-year contract, as as indicated, and the primary in item that you, everybody usually is interested in is the the wage increase, and it's a two and a half percent wage increase each year. There were some additional items that were clean up as far as union dues and things like that, just, and again, you have the legislative copy in your, in your packet to make, you know, to see the changes that were made from the current agreement and this agreement. There was a slight increase in the tool allowance for the mechanics. There was a slight increase in the uniform allowance for the operators and the mechanics. There, in addition to the two and a half percent wage increase, and then there also was an increase in the longevity pay for each of the different incremental levels of of service. And so all of the items that are in there are certainly are based on comparability when we compare with other communities with transit, with transit operators, transit operations, and I, I think we reached a real good agreement with the group, and and hopefully you'll approve it, and we can move on.
Thank you. Questions from the council for this testifier? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in the chamber like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one, let's move to agenda item 5D.
All right, this is accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for August 15th through 31st, 2018.
Would anyone like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward. Anyone from the council? Can we move to 5E, then?
Yes, authorizing the use of surplus funds from the city's one-quarter cent sales tax for public safety to acquire new fire apparatus.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Just so everyone knows, we are most likely going to vote to put this item on pending no date certain at the request of the administration.
Other comments from the council? Would anyone in the chamber like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing none, 5F, please.
This would be approving a consultant agreement between the city and Walker Parking Consultants Engineers Incorporated, doing business as Walker Consultants to assist with the replacement of the parking access and revenue control system for the city and joint public agency parking facilities.
Good afternoon, Wayne McStorff, parking manager. Uh, this resolution is for an agreement with Walker Consultants to assist us in writing the technical specifications for an RFP for new parking revenue control equipment. It'd also be assisting us with evaluating the proposals that we receive and then helping us project manage the installation. The project is expected to take place over two years, so the contract itself would be for a two-year period.
Questions from the council? Councilwoman Eskridge?
Yes. Mr. McStorff, the, the equipment we currently have, I see it down periodically.
Occasionally.
So tell us about the need for...
Well, um, in, this is for the nine city-owned and operated garages. This would not impact the JPA garages. And three of our garages, currently, the equipment has reached the end of its normal life expectancy. It's been in in place for 10 years or more. We're also anticipating, the way that the technology changes are occurring, exactly, that we are not equipped currently to be able to manage the more modern payment options for the public. So we'd like to be able to position ourselves to do that. Our current equipment won't allow us to do that. We're starting to experience some communication difficulties with our equipment, the lag times in transmission of, of, for example, if you come to a card reader, there's often a, several second lag time between reading the card and vending the gate. And that's the type of thing that we're, we're hoping to correct.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Councilwoman Camp?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea, Mr. McStorff, on what the equipment itself will cost or a range of costs?
No, I don't have an exact figure that I can, that I can speak to. I know that we've budgeted about a million and a half for for this particular part of the project. I would expect that we would be able to do our existing nine garages for for that amount of money, but until we actually receive proposals, I really can't say.
I was trying to relate the $95,000 contract with Walker versus what it's doing, so that's where about 7% of the anticipated equipment cost would be...
Yes, sir.
Soft dollars here.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one? That takes us to the end of our public hearing, no resolutions. Shall we enter the voting session?
Yes, so we can vote on these items. Item 5A is approving the city tax rate introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
There were motion by Eskridge and second by Christensen. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5B is approving an update of the city's FTA program, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Christensen. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 5C is approving the labor contract with ATU, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Raybold. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge. Motion carried, seven to zero. 5D is approving the report of new impending claims, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Christensen. Discussion? Please call roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 5E is the use of surplus funds from the city's one-quarter cent sales tax, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Raybold. Councilman Christensen?
I move this item be put on pending no date certain.
Second.
Motion by Christensen, second by Gaylor Baird. Discussion of placing this on pending.
And this will be with public hearing.
Would you call the roll, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Excuse me. Next is item 5F, the consultant agreement with Walker Parking, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Raybold. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. We have no public hearing ordinance, a second reading. Ordinance is third reading, item 7A, amending 9.20.050 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to disturbing the peace to include the use of electronic devices, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 7B is change of zone 18013, application of Philip Winta for a change from AGR Agricultural to O3 Office Park and O R3 Residential at 8435 Fire Thorn Lane, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 7C, use permit 18005, application of Philip Winta to allow up to 26,400 square feet of commercial area on approximately 2.74 acres, with waivers to setbacks, lighting design standards, and access off the end of a private roadway on property at 8435 Fire Thorn Lane, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion? Teresa, would you call the roll for us, please?
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?